Alright, good evening, everybody. It's 5:31 today. We'll get started tonight, calling this meeting in order for the Amherst School Board. It is our, I think this is kind of our official school kickoff, first one before the school year starts after our July break, quote unquote, break that we had with a couple of retreats mixed in. But our first regular business session as normal as we get ready for the start of the school year in just a couple of weeks, two weeks from today, in fact, kids will be back in school here across SAU 39. We have three board members present. We have one that will join us remotely and then our newest board member, Tim Thaberge, is unavailable tonight due to a prior work commitment. Tim, as you may recall, was appointed to the board back in the June-July timeframe, filling the seat vacated by Victoria Parisi. So Tim will join us for our next meeting as well, but tonight was a previously scheduled work trip trip that he was unable to get out of. So as we called order at 5:31, we'll go right into our agenda tonight. Before we get into public comment, there is one piece of business that we want to adjust, a correspondence that you'll see the first item on the agenda after the call to order. The, a couple of professionals on the AEA, the Amherst Education Association, they filed a right to know complaint with the Ombudsman Office in the state, Amy Hansen and Larry Ballard, basically covered two topics with the Ways and Means Committee from the fiscal 20, or the FY 22, 23 school year, if you will, talking about two different items that they were filing the right to know request about. It was that the committee chair did not provide Amy or Larry with the information they requested within five days under an RSA 91A. And the other item was that the Ways and Means Committee did not consistently record names of committee members who made and seconded motions in the official minutes, as also required under that same RSA. So after discussions with the Ways and Means Committee members and the AEA members, there was an agreement that was put in place where Ways and Means admitted that these two items were accurate in the right to know request. So as a result, Amy and Larry have withdrawn their right to know request with the Ombudsman on the state level. So that has been removed, that right to know request has been removed, signed by the affiliated parties. And that is no longer an item that will be on Ways and Means going forward. So does anybody on the board have any questions for Steve on that? He was involved with that intimately. Any questions or any follow up for him? Okay, we just wanted to call that out. It was important to know that there was that correspondence going down behind the scenes over the last couple of months. But that is now in the agenda packet and will be on the SAU website or should be on the SAU website if you care to read that further. So going on, we'll open up our first public comment session of the night. If you'd like to join us remotely, you can raise your hands. If you're remote, you can have your camera turned on. You can also, no, I don't need to raise my hands. You can also make sure that your name is in your avatar when you do come on, say your name and location. We'll do in person first, and so we have somebody that is at the mic, Mr. Fritz. Feel free to take three minutes when you are ready.
Okay, I may have to turn it on the bottom first.
I won't count this as part of your three minutes. We'll be generous tonight. Steve, are you able to make me a panelist in this meeting? I can't see any of the participants. Greg, before you go, I do want to just, Terry Beam has joined us. I don't see her on here yet. So actually, we'll let you go first, Greg, and then we'll have Terry just acknowledge that she can't make it in person. So three minutes are yours.
I want to correct what you said, Tom. The communication was never between any members of Ways and Means. Like, I never got any communication. I believe that the former chair was the, was the only point, I believe.
Correct, excuse me, thank you. Point of clarification.
Okay, thanks. Alright, so I know tonight you're talking about the facilities plans. I'm looking forward to hearing about that. And I kind of want to ask you about the Plan B that you introduced between the scheduled election, and then there was a delay with the snowstorm at the actual election. You called the board meeting and really the only thing you covered was what you call the Plan B, which involves some portables, irresponsible, not Plan B. And it was a pretty low cost compared to the proposed costs. And I wondered if that Plan B is now Plan A, if that's now a preferred plan, or how that plan sits, if that plan was a real proposal. And I also wondered if you interpreted the March election results where there was overwhelmingly no votes on the proposed plan you had, if you consider that to be an endorsement of what you called Plan B. That's kind of the question of my question. And then if I had more time.
We have two minutes, plenty of time.
This is the handout that you guys provided, J-FAC, as well as the Amherst School Board. Last year prior to the vote, it shows the breakdown of the cost. The estimated interest rate head on here was 5.75. Later on, you helped act, make them more accurate down to like 3.65 for 25 years. And I believe the bond sale was 3.65 for 20 years. So I think that's a good kudos to Amy and the team for getting that really close. And I saw that it was $100 million to 16 communities was awarded. I think that's accurate. I was wondering if you guys have any analysis on if that would have included Amherst, given where we were in that, that ranking of other municipalities. Thank you.
Amy, just to answer that question, you go off the top of your head if that would have included Amherst in there. We'll talk about the facilities piece of it later, Greg. We'll hit on that later, but just.
So where we were in the queue, Amherst would not have been rewarded if every project was approved. So if, if none of the projects were approved and Amherst was approved, we would have been bumped to first in the line and we would have gotten.
Maybe you'd have it today, but I'm wondering, it'd be nice to have an analysis, say, of the 16 that got awarded. Those may have been below us on the ranking. If the ones above us, they didn't pass their election either, right? So I'm just curious, could you provide us within like a month or two, some understanding of if we had passed our bond in March, would we have gotten that state aid from the?
Happy to.
Any other public comments in person? Good, say your name and then town of residence and then you have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Aaron Kaplan, Amherst. First, Mr. Berry would like to congratulate you on your recent appointment. We were very impressed with you at the meet the candidates night. And even though we have not dealt personally with you, everyone we spoke with were very impressed with you. So congratulations. Unfortunately, that is not the primary reason I went here. I'm here to discuss the appointment of Mr. Thaberge to this school board in a apparently illegal non-public session. And I would like to give this board opportunity to, perhaps you were not aware of this, but I would like to give the board opportunity to correct that and see that this is made right. Everyone here knows that boards must abide by state law while conducting hearings. And non-public have very strict and stringent requirements to be able to enter them. This board chose to utilize reputation. However, that reputation cannot be used to shoehorn in topics of conversation that simply don't fall under any other ones. An error, even in, from my sources, an error even one made in good faith can result in legal action that could invalidate the action taken by the board and lead to other consequences such as liability for attorney fees and costs. It cannot be stressed enough that a public body may use a non-public session only for very limited purposes, which are listed in the IRSAs. If none of these purposes applies, a discussion may not be held in non-public. Furthermore, the Supreme Court, in my research, has already ruled on this and stated that it is illegal to discuss candidates to fill a vacancy in non-public session for an elected position. Reputation, this exception should only be used only when absolutely necessary. And for a discussion with potential candidates, that is the people's business that, in my opinion, should be conducted publicly so that the people can see what is happening that affects them. If the law is not abiding by, any action taken in non-public may be invalidated, such as a removable, removal of a candidate illegally installed into position, and the board could be subject to injunctive relief, including civil penalties, meaning fines. So.
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds.
I did have quite a bit more to say here. However, Mr. Thaberge is not present, and so I will abbreviate it. Now, just recently, within the last few weeks, you had a meeting where someone was allowed to speak for six minutes. I hope you grant me just a little courtesy for a few seconds additional. I will give a very abbreviated version of what I was going to say since Mr. Thaberge is not present. I, I don't know if you are aware of what I just said, but now that you are aware, I hope you're looking to the matter and see that it is corrected. However, I also don't know if you are aware of Mrs. Thaberge's comments at a book hearing for a book review, very divisive, offensive, inappropriate comments labeling people without evidence, without any good cause, calling fellow citizens fascists, Nazis. I take offense to that. Since he is not here, I will shorten this right down to just a few sentences. He did try to backpedal and say, I was calling anyone a fascist in that room. It was someone out in the ether I was referring to. That's what I gathered from his backpedaling. I don't know if you're aware of this. If anyone needs to see the timestamp of the video where he made this offensive speech, labeling people fascists, I can provide that to you. I do not have the timestamp available tonight. It was not a one-off. This is a pattern that this gentleman has unfortunately engaged in. He has a First Amendment right to say as many offensive things as he wants. He could even wear a swastika on his arm and no one could do anything about it. We have the First Amendment. However, in my opinion, his actions and his pattern of behavior disqualifies him from being, serving on a board. These boards represent all community members, staff, teachers, students, parents. Everyone here should know because of my past actions, how much I deeply care about the school system and how much I support the school system. However, when I see a pattern of comments such as the greatest generation fought against Nazis and fascism, the boomers are voting them in, Mr. Thaberge's words. The only people creating division are the Christo fascists. I will not give them one inch. When someone said, can't you see this is divisive? And he doubles down and says resisting fascism is divisive. I'm all for it. Doubles down and yet backpedals when called out on this very offensive commentary he made. There are things to compromise on. This wasn't it. I do not know if everyone here was aware of that. That should be divorced completely from the first concern, whether I approved of, didn't approve of, that doesn't matter. That is not the law. This is a separate thing. Even if it were a candidate that was completely 100% well qualified and could truly represent the community, I would still have concerns that I raised here. So it is not that is this gentleman, although this board should know what this gentleman brings to the table, and I hope that you should not want that. And essentially, Mr. Thaberge should have good grace to, to offer a profuse apology to this community, everyone that he smeared, and then his immediate resignation so that this board can move back to the business of conducting that appropriately. If the board sees fit to put him right back into place, you certainly can do so, but it should be done publicly. And if you choose to put your stamp of approval on this behavior, you can certainly do that, but it should be done publicly. And I appreciate you granting a little extra time and I appreciate your, your work here.
Yep, we can look into that. Thanks, Aaron. Any other comments from the public in attendance? We do not have any attendees online. So with that, I will close public comment for now. And we will go on to our consent agenda tonight, which there was a late addition of the consent agenda. The Amherst Middle School Handbook was added into that. Mike was able to provide a memo just to provide some of the highlights. We got that a few minutes before the meeting, so there's a board on any items excluding the handbook. And if you're comfortable voting on the handbook, we can do that as well. But well, first, actually, before we do that, Steve, can you promote Terry to panelist? Or did she deny it?
First time she denied it. We'll try again.
Yeah, try it again because we'll need to have her recognize that she's unable to make it here tonight. She accepted. It looks like she accepted it.
I took it personally.
I, I would, I would have as well. Terry, if you can please just say that it was impractical for you to be here tonight and that you're alone, that would be, allow us to get started here tonight.
Sorry, I never saw the pop-up the first time, Steve. Sorry about that. Yes, it is impractical for me to be there and I am alone.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I will take a motion to approve the consent agenda with the handbook, if everybody's, if somebody's comfortable making that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the handbook.
Okay. And can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so discussion on any of the items in the consent agenda as we get started before we call a vote on that.
I just have a question. So with the handbook, what happens if we don't approve that tonight? Just to spend a little more time with it, like, does it have to happen?
It's probably a better question for, for Mike or Steve, but I would imagine that we would just have to approve it for the next, at our next meeting.
I mean, we can still.
Unless it's one of those where we have to approve it before school starts.
It's, it's, we needed.
I think, I think, yeah, I think you would come back for revisions at another time, inform the families of any revisions. But tonight, because we're school hours, the registration process.
Okay.
But if there's areas you'd like us to revisit, we have.
I, I just haven't done a deep enough dive because.
Shannon, what, what I suggest is, you know, if you can get an approval tonight, and then if there's concerns, you know, or questions, we'd be more than happy to talk them at the, at the next, the next board meeting.
Great.
If you want to, and send over any revision ideas that you are, or suggestions or comments.
I mean, honestly, at first pass, it looked great. I really loved the pyramid for the discipline items and things like that. It just, yeah. Thank you.
Anything from you, Terry, on any of the items in the consent agenda, or specifically the handbook, if you have any of the concerns about that?
Um, I was able to briefly go over. I wondered if we, if we maybe want to talk about the one addition that's probably going to have the most questions about. Is it part of the handbook about turning on the, the monitoring module?
We'll cover that later in the meeting.
Okay, so that's going to be discussed later.
We have a separate item for that specifically to talk about that one item.
Okay, sorry, I was trying to look at the updated.
Yep, no, it's fine. It's the internet content monitoring on school devices.
Great. If we're going to talk about it later, then I can wait till later. Otherwise, I'm comfortable with the rest. Thank you for the hard work from both administrations for getting these ready.
Alright, so let's call a vote on this, knowing that we may come back to it and revise or make revisions. We've had a deeper dive into the handbook itself, but for now, we can, we can vote on approving the consent agenda as is, which includes the handbook. And again, knowing that we can come back to it if needed. All in favor, we'll have to do a roll call vote with Terry absent. So Terry, I will start with you.
Beam, yes.
White, yes.
Gascoigne, yes.
And Gothier, yes. So that passes four to nothing with one member not here tonight. Alright. Moving on to our next agenda item, we do the subcommittee reviews in a more formal manner rather than go through each subcommittee one by one. Does anybody have any items from their own individual subcommittees? Any items that are worthy of updating the board on tonight that they'd like to share? Jason?
Yeah, I don't know if it's worthy or not. CIP started, they had their first meeting on the 17th, I think it was. I was.
Last Thursday.
And it was last Thursday. Amy probably attended. She can talk more about it, but I believe it was rec food and police. But that is up and going.
And from what I saw driving by Town Hall, because I wasn't able to go either, it was a fairly short meeting, if I'm not mistaken.
Very short. Yep, we set, set the meetings for the rest of the season and Roger and I will be presenting in two weeks.
And we also, we had our initial meeting for the facilities for the brick school building as well, correct? That was back in early August.
Yeah, we ended up having to cancel that meeting because there weren't enough attendees. So we've rescheduled that for the 30th.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Sure. Amherst Building and Grounds has continued to meet. And obviously, the office trailer is now in place at Wilkins. So that is ready to go to provide some privacy and meeting space to, for folks there. And the roof project at AMS should be wrapping up. And the contract with Banwell is, is in the works to get that underway. So that is the update from the Building and Grounds. We also have two new members on that subcommittee, Mike Norian and Christine Grayson.
Terry, anything from you on the subcommittee side?
Yeah, I was on the, the brick school that didn't meet yet, and ours hasn't started meeting yet this year.
Alright, continuing to move on, we'll do that every meeting. Obviously, if there are items of note, we can share those, but we don't, if a subcommittee is not met, we certainly don't have to go over and say that they've not met at that point. Next up, we'll get into the, oh, it looks like Greg left. We'll get into the, the facility, goals and retreat follow-ups. We did have two sessions over the summer where we got together as a board in public, all done above board. We discussed, the first one was facilities, that was in July, spent about three and a half or four hours really going over facility plans. A lot of the administration was here, including Roger Preston, our principals that are in attendance tonight were there, SAU administration. And then we also had Brad Prescott from Banwell join us that day and really provided some insight on some of the items that we were talking about, what was feasible, what was not feasible, what, you know, what we might want to do. And as a board, we whittled it down to essentially coming up with a couple of different facilities plans. As Greg had mentioned, a lot of no votes. So when we met in March, between the postponed election day and the real election day, we did discuss sort of a quasi-Plan B, just some temporary solutions, increased portable, some different ideas like that. We have not gone back to that at this point. Through surveys, we found that portables really aren't a popular option at this point, but it's something we can always look, go back to if needed. So right now, we've set forth a plan with Banwell to have two different facility proposals drawn up. One is going to essentially just be a scaled-down model of what we proposed last year, or I should say, back in March in the ballot, with a one through five Wilkin School, and then having preschool and kindergarten stay over at Clark for the time being. This would allow us to get fifth grade out of AMS to free up some space there. And it will allow, allow us to build a, a built-to-suits new Wilkin School, but it's going to be considerably smaller than in the original proposal, which included kindergarten and pre-K, preschool over there as well. And then certainly some of the joint spaces would be a little bit smaller as well. So Banwell is working on those plans. And ideally, Shannon, if, keep me honest here, it was a plan to have those come back and, come back in March with that plan. Additionally, we are also having them do up a renovation addition plan where we would have a small addition added on to Wilkins now. It would still be designed for grades one through five because that's really the best use of our space. It gets fifth grade back down into the elementary school. And again, allows us to keep Clark with pre-K and kindergarten over there. This plan is going to be smaller, more scaled down, looking at the renovations, but they're going to dive into that. And we'll be able to compare the costs of what these two different projects would look like, something that we didn't have this last time, but a much more laid-out cost plan. But now I ask you, Shannon, October was roughly the timeframe we discussed with Brad for that, correct?
That's right.
Anything you would like to add to that from the facilities retreat that I'm missing? Jason, Terry, either?
Sure. I think it's also really important for folks to know that when we met in our retreat, everything was on the table. And we were really looking, there were three big questions that really came out of the postmortem of the election results and, and the surveys that we received. And those three questions really revolved around what's going to happen with the Clark School. How can we get this new, new building or whatever's happening on the Wilkin site? A little more refined, smaller, less of an impact to the taxpayer. And finally, is there space at the annex? I've heard there's space at the annex. What's happening there? So our, our focus was really around those questions. And, and that's, that's kind of how we arrived where we are with Clark staying a preschool kindergarten.
And we have sent a letter to the Southheagan School Board. If you saw Southheagan's meeting last week or the week before, they had a lengthy discussion on the topic that we proposed to them was essentially proposing a district-wide preschool, but using space in the annex to house the entire preschool program, at least for Amherst, and getting Mount Vernon, Mount Vernon involved to see if we wanted to make it a Mount Vernon-Amherst preschool in the annex. And having the ability to potentially morph that into something where high school students interested in that early elementary education would have a chance to earn some CTE credits and experience by participating in the care of those preschool kids. So that does allow us, or would allow us, I should say, to free up some space at Clark, but that is in the very infancy stages. And that plan, our building plans for a one through five school at Wilkins is not contingent upon that being adopted by Southheagan or not. So it's a separate idea, but it was a way to be able to free up some space in that building and then expand that preschool program to the entire district.
Correct.
Do you have anything, Jason, you? It looks like I cut you off there.
Oh, yeah, no, no, that's, that's, I was, you mentioned what I was pretty much going to mention, that we wrote a letter over to Southheagan, hope, and looking forward to having that conversation with them and hopefully getting that, moving in that direction. In, you know, the one, the one to five. In an attempt to try to answer Greg's question, I was a little confused where he said like option B, portables, because wait, in my mind, and this could just be my mind, my mind, I could be a little off here. It's like, we, we have these two options that we're going to get back from Banwell, and one of those is going to be A, and the other one's going to be B. We had talked about like we're getting an office portable. That is something that we have put on the agenda, but I don't really remember having a full, like, we're doing portals. I think we pretty much took that off the table. So I was a little confused about that. So I almost kind of wish he was here so we did, but.
It was something we discussed in March. Victoria had done a presentation on it. We'd gotten pricing for portables to add two different portables out back there, but it was not an expansive, you know, mechanical upgrades, plumbing upgrades. It didn't cover that. And it, it only literally covered an extra four classrooms, I believe, or at least what the price of four classrooms would be. And obviously, you could do that to scale six, eight, you know, based off that pricing, but that was really the extent of it. But that was what a potential Plan B or Plan C could look like, had things not gone our way on election day, and clearly they didn't. But at this point, that is still on the back burner. I think that's still the nuclear option if we need it. It was an option, but it just was after we discussed at the facilities retreat in July, it was one that we took off the table because it just doesn't make a whole lot of sense to keep adding portables when you're going to have that cost and you have to replace all the systems in the building.
Yeah, I mean, I think what, to summarize what came out of the portable discussion, we did do the legwork of, of getting some preliminary cost. Roger Preston and Mr. Chamberlain went as far as, you know, review, visiting, looking at a portable that did not have a bathroom. We weighed that option for this year. And really where we arrived was that portables are a costly option. They are money down the drain, to be quite frank. They're not a long-term solution and they are a soft target for our students and faculty who are housed in there. So that's why we see the office portable that we have at Wilkins now. Just to clarify that, I think there's been some confusion in the community as to what that's for. Last year, the stage at Wilkins was being utilized for conferences, which include IEP meetings, et cetera. Those are meetings that are mandated and should be held with privacy and dignity. The stage was where we were holding those meetings last year. This year, however, we had to make some tough decisions with our music program. We had the choice of putting them in a very expensive portable that didn't have a bathroom. We were able to potentially secure that. Or putting that program on a cart, which we know from a few years ago was not an optimal situation and did not work well for our students, or moving them to the stage. So this year, the music program will be on the stage. We'll get creative with our scheduling. We've done some work to try to put some panels on the stage to provide a little bit of a sound buffer and create a classroom environment. And the conferences that were taking place on the stage are now taking place in the secure office trailer that is on the front of Wilkins. So that's what we're doing now. We're committed to keeping our kids safe. We're committed to keeping our, our faculty and staff safe and providing as much privacy and dignity to all of those folks as we can with what we have, as we continue to march forward to arrive at a solution that our community is able to support. And that was really the crux of what we worked on this summer.
Okay. Moving on to our second retreat that we had, this one was more focusing on visioning and vision and planning in the districts. The superintendent had a presentation. We heard from the two principals what their goals were, were for this immediate year. And I think with Mike stepping in, and Mike, feel free to jump in and elaborate on this, the, the goal is to, to right the ship sort of and, and really come up with a focus and then be able to explain that to more long-term strategic thinking over the next year or two, but immediately trying to focus on a couple of different things to be able to get, to fulfill your vision, but also the vision of the principals and, and the, the rest of the admin staff. So I will let you take it from there and expand on it, but that was what we'd spent some time on, all with the goal of really coming up with that piece of how do we evaluate the education in our district? And this is a big part of us being able to do that over the next couple of years.
Thanks, Tom. No, I appreciated the, the time to, to sit down with the, the board and, and the other administrators as we kind of talked about what the 23, 24 school year will look like, the 24, 25 school year could look like as far as like where we're going to put energies. And, you know, we're still going to have these conversations kind of flushed out and, and we'll have a little bit more of it as, at the SAU board meeting later this week. And we'll also have into September as we kind of, you know, get the year going and, and start to work with people. But at the end of the day, we're in uniquely positions in SAU 39 and, and Amherst School District, as well as the others to kind of be that school district that has the ability to, you know, balance high academic expectations and deliver on those, but also provide deep care and, 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 you know, social, emotional wellbeing for, for our students. You know, we are looking for that sweet spot as we talked about where, where that is. And, you know, this, the, the district was founded on, on these principles. It makes us unique compared to some of the other comp districts that people like to compare us to. And, and we're going to go work towards that as, as we begin this school year. But you heard a lot of conversation around trying to, to narrow energies. Uh, but you heard a lot of conversation around trying to, to narrow energies and, and you know, put our, our students in positions where they can learn and, and they can learn, uh, at, at high levels. They can learn at their own pace. Uh, teachers can manage the initiatives. And people are clear on, on what we're focusing on. So some of the thoughts that we talked about from, from the SAU and we wanted the districts, including, you know, Amherst to try to align to these thoughts. So the experiences and Amherst and MB and at South Heagan, there are some commonalities and through lines. And so the areas of focus in, you know, to be brief for, for this evening is, you know, we want to focus on reading. Uh, we're going to, a constant goal to capture and expand, uh, you know, instructional time. That's during the school day. That's during, uh, the school year. That's calendaring. Uh, there, there's definitely a focus on that. Another area of focus is to having, uh, a strong supervision and evaluation model that is completed with fidelity, that focuses more on supervision and, and, and coaching and support, uh, and, and real good partnership between, uh, teachers and, and support staff and administration. Uh, some other areas that we're going to put focus on throughout and look through, through lines. And I think the administrators here in this, you know, in this district have done a great job of aligning to these, these, these thoughts and these ideas is to build trust. Do what we say we're going to do, be transparent with how we interact, have all the conversations, have all the meetings, be open about what we're doing, uh, and, and how we're moving forward. One of the things we talked about is and, and for me as a new superintendent, don't really have the luxury of controlling like what was done prior to July 1, 2023. All we can do is control how we move forward and, and that's really what we're going to do. Uh, another area of focus is, you know, we really dug in, in a bunch of places of talking about how we use data and there's, and and, and one of the things that we wrapped our heads around with at, at the SAU level and talked about with our building administrators is to go ahead and tease apart a little bit about, you know, how you measure for effectiveness as schools and school districts and SAUs. And then the data you use to, you know, improve the, you know, the learning outcomes for students to improve the educational experience. And, and as we get into that, we're going to talk a little bit more about that and what that looks like at, at, at different schools, at different districts. Uh, but there is a different distinct between measuring for effectiveness and using data for, to improve the educational experience. And then there's a, a third piece we talked about is program evaluation, whether it's a math program, whether it's certain positionings at, at different grade levels. Um, and whether there's a certain piece of curriculum. So, you know, we're going to take a look at that as well and excited about that work. Like I said, the administrators did a pretty good job, you know, kind of aligning towards that. Uh, and, and as we open up school, our, our, our staff will, will hear a little bit about that. And then at the end of the day, you know, you know, we want to pass budgets and we want to improve facilities. So as we talked about where we're going, those are some of the things that, that we, we, we talked about. Um, really looking forward to it. Uh, enjoyed the, the conversation and, uh, took, you know, the feedback from, from all the, the different retreats, including this. And, uh, we're getting closer and closer to being able to put something out formal. And as we get into next year, you know, you know, we're going 23, 24. I want people to think of it in a two-year process as we get into 24, 25. You know, and if we have to evolve this and, and extend it out and, and, and tweak some of these directions, we can. Um, but at the end of the day, here's, here's my assessment as I kind of, you know, entered into this position. I don't think the community has the stomach to go through an in-depth strategic planning, uh, activity and strategizing, you know, based on previous experiences in the last probably six to eight years. So what we want to do is kind of get down and get into the work and, and, uh, that's what we talked about at the last retreat. So appreciate that. I can take any, if there's any more conversations or anyone wants to add something, you know, on their take, we can.
Jason.
I think the, the big takeaway in terms of like vision is we talked a lot about how Amherst is unique, right? So Mike kind of touched upon it about how we're constant or, you know, frequently compared to Bedford or Hollis Brookline. We're not really a match because our community values things differently, right? We have some who certainly are all about test scores. And then we have another contingency where it's about the SEL and about the, you know, the whole child and we have a unique opportunity, we feel here, we can kind of merge those and mesh and hit, and hit the sweet spot. So I think that's important to kind of emphasize for the community that we, we hear both factions. And we want to, there is a way we believe to merge those things together and provide the educational experience that, um, our community is asking.
Terry, anything from you?
Um, I think one of the things that stood out for me is that we are always looking for ways to communicate more and better with our community. And I think we came up with some good ideas. And I think that, um, for those who would like to be more engaged and know what's going on, we are, we are really going to be making a concerted effort to have, um, as many ways as possible to communicate in an easily digestible format to, to let people stay involved with what's going on.
It's actually a perfect segue, Terry, because I was going to get into some of our board goals from this year. And the first one was going to discuss communication. We had this as a separate agenda item, but I figured it was just easier to roll right into our conversation on goals. Maybe in, I don't know if it's a reverse order of priority, but certainly, um, one of the goals last year, we had a communication piece on there. Did a lot more things to try to communicate, had a lot of the, had a lot of in-home sessions, had a lot of sessions at the library. Not always greatly attended. So continuing to find ways to, to morph and update our communications. So one of the things that Tim has suggested that they did, uh, in his previous district was doing a lot more statements, monthly statements from the board, summaries of meetings. So you're not just getting the, the meeting minutes in the next agenda. So something that we're, we're looking to do and implement here as we go forward into September. Also some different pieces, uh, that they utilized around voting day to tell the stories of the schools. We consistently tell the stories of we're looking for a new building. We're looking for, uh, this, for this budget or, you know, looking for these items in the budget here. But we don't always do the greatest job of telling the positive stories of the school. The principals provide great feedback for us on a monthly basis of what's going on in the schools. So as a board, working to build that into our monthly communication, sharing that with the community, but then having sort of a, a grander piece at the end of the year and election day to be able to share all the great things that have happened in the schools, uh, and the challenges overcome in the schools during that previous year. So when folks get the uh, deliberative session, they get the, the nuts and bolts of the budget, but they also get the, uh, the fluffy feel-good stuff, if you will, as well. So they really have an idea as to what is going on in the school. So with that, I will open up. I know Shannon, you had some thoughts on that and, um, the importance of us being able to get that in place sooner rather than later.
Sure. Yep. Um, and, and just, I know, I know you weren't being literal, but, um, not, not even the fluffy feel-good. I wouldn't call it that. It's just, it's just a complete picture. Right? I think it's easy around budget time. We just want to focus on the dollars and cents, which is critical. Um, and that's how you keep things, you know, running and, and folks have a, a real, um, right and, and should be invested in that. But also to really give that complete picture of what's going on in our schools. And, and I think we could do a better job there. Um, regarding board communications, I think the idea that Tim, uh, put out there, which was that, you know, the board should be issuing statements, letting the community know what we're doing. For example, we just shared our summary of our board retreat specifically around the facilities. That was really, uh, that's really important work that's going to have a big impact on the community. But unless you're watching this meeting right now or you're looking at the minutes, you wouldn't know that. So um, a statement after each meeting that lives somewhere on the SAU website, maybe there's a little board corner. I would, I would move, I would propose that at the end of each meeting, we just have five minutes on every agenda. Where as a body, we say, okay, what are our statements from this meeting? Are, are there any that we want to put out? We bullet the list. One of us takes the responsibility for writing them up that month, and it's that simple to begin with. I don't think we need to overcomplicate this. I think the letters to the citizen were great, but the citizen is, hasn't published all summer. And with it being online, you know, I just, I don't know how many people that's reaching. So we could have a, a corner on the website that's, you know, board communications. We could put our statements there each month. And then those can be shared out, um, in various places. That's my recommendation on, on where to start.
Yep. I think it's a great idea. And I think if we want to utilize this first one, we can use it to summarize the two retreats that we had for the summer. I think tonight's meeting is a lot more of these smaller things that are just checking off boxes. Um, but I think we can incorporate, you know, if we need to do a couple of things, but focusing on the two retreats, giving a good summary of those so that you're not just reading minutes or watching the meeting um, as we do that. So, uh, I don't know if we need to put five minutes on at the end of the agenda tonight, but if we want to focus on the two retreats, I think that'll be our first task for for this, uh, this first statement. We can get that together and then we can discover the best way, where to store it on the website and then best way to get it out, um, coming from the board, utilizing the resources that the SAU has. So.
Yeah. And I just want to touch, I know we, we probably are ready to move on to the ways and, and means group here, but just to touch real quick on something that superintendent Barry said that I think is an important distinction for anyone who reads the minutes or watches. Um, we talked a lot about planning and the importance of planning and the need for, um, you know, really clear, simple, digestible plans that we can share with our community because our constituents have a right um, and, and a, an appetite to know what we're doing, how our budget's tied to our plans, how our, our dollar, their tax dollars, you know, are improving curriculum and experience. So while we're not looking to do any lengthy strategic plan that involves bringing in the whole community and going through all those processes immediately. Planning is very much at the forefront of what this board is doing and what we're looking at doing as a broader SAU when all three of the boards are together. I know that's on everyone's radar and including a, a, all the board's radar. So I just, I wanted to really make sure that we hit that point as well.
Yep. It's, uh, it's planning just by a different name essentially is what it is. So. Um, with that, the only other item we had in the board goal section was, uh, last year we had a handful of goals based primarily on hiring a superintendent, getting in schools as board members. Uh, I had them all memorized and now they're all slipping from my head. Um, continued communication with the community, including engagement sessions, which we did a lot of, really mainly focused on facilities, but having sessions where folks could ask us questions. Um, I, again, hiring superintendent, working with, um, the AEA and the ASSA to get contracts last year, and then certainly the facilities plan again. So with those goals, I think some of those carry over. Uh, fortunately our contracts passed, uh, with the community. So we don't have those on the agenda for this year, but um, barring any objection from the board, we can certainly elaborate on these with specifics, uh, specific tracking mechanisms for our next meeting. But I think the takeaway, and if somebody wants to add to these, we can. Facilities, um, just developing those plans, coming up with multiple plans with Banwell, um, the education evaluation metrics that we're working on with the uh, administration right now, working in, as part of the vision and planning that Mike had said. Uh, we've touched on the communication piece and then really last year, we had some more broad-based curriculum overviews. I think this year, um, in line with, with what our goals are and what the district's metrics are focusing on reading and math. Uh, really evaluating those programs, a, a new math program after one year. So overseeing the evaluation of that and, and waiting for, um, expected updates from Steve and Christine as they go through some of the results of that. And they really evaluated here in year two. Um, so those four items I think are, are good starting points for our goals. If anybody wants to add anything, we can, but I think those are pretty ambitious. Some of those for uh, particularly facilities and the, uh, evaluation piece, those are going to be pretty ambitious for this year. But if somebody wants to add something, I'm more than willing to write it down and we can discuss specifics and tracking in our next meeting. Going once, twice. Uh, Jason.
Uh, no, I think these goals are good. I just think we need to, as we move into next month, think maybe more detailed and I'm focusing more on the evaluation uh, of educate, you know, the metrics that we're going to use. And, and so I just think we need to make sure that we have next month an agenda item. Like here are the details. Here's, though we have the broad goal, but what does that mean that we're going to be carrying out?
Correct. And I think that's homework essentially for all of us to, to come up with what we view, what would, how would we view a successful achievement of that goal? Um, and then we can collaborate and combine those at the next meeting. Anything from you, Terry, on those?
Yeah. I don't know if this falls under communication or not, but I feel like I really now that we have, now that we have contracts behind us, I think that I, I want us to kind of revisit as board members, getting into the schools as much as we can. And being there firsthand to see, um, some of the great things going on, some of the challenges, you know, all of it. And, and being more present. And I think on the other half of that is inviting now that we have, you know, dropped COVID restrictions and now that we really are back to normal operating, um, people who, who volunteer a lot have to get background checked, but, but finding opportunities to get our, our public back into the school and reviving the citizens in schools program. And finding, um, useful ways to, to let people come be engaged and support our schools besides just their tax dollars.
Okay. I think that ties into the communication piece, but I think just simply participation in the schools between the board and the community is a good, uh, good way for us to instill the community to do that, but then for us to continue to follow up on that, knowing that it's difficult with, with work schedules and everything, but um, finding ways to be able to do that when we can. I think everybody was in a building at least once last year. Um, but trying to do that and, and no matter what capacity we can is a, is a good fifth item to add on to there, kind of a continuation from last year as well. So um, again, if we think of metrics that we want to track or use to track that in parameters, um, it doesn't have to be so literal as every board member needs to get in five times during the year. But I think that there's probably broader base trackable items that we can be used to monitor these long-term.
Is that, um, a goal or sub-goal, whatever we want to call it, that we could maybe talk more in depth with administration on maybe next month, like how would, you know, make sure it's a productive use of everyone's time? Um, having board members visit schools.
Yeah.
You know, I don't want to also like tax building administration with like my presence, like here I am, show me around. Um, you know, just making sure that it's effective for us and it's effective for everybody. And I don't want to, I know people are already kind of burdened. Yeah, no, I have two hours of lunch duty that I have to do on my own.
It sounds like we have some potential that they, uh, they have some avenues where we could provide some help. So. All right. So we'll work on that for the next meeting, but we'll stick with those, uh, five goals, facilities, evaluation, communication, the specific program evaluation for reading and math, and then getting into schools more both as board members and inviting the community to get involved in some of the volunteer opportunities that are available. And those will be agenda items that we'll discuss more in depth, uh, with tracking and metrics and, and other specifics when we meet in September. Um, next up on the agenda, we will discuss ways and means. Our moderator, Ellen Grugan is in town. Ellen, if you'd like to come up to the micro, and not in town, she's in the building, I should say. She's always in town. Uh, if you'd like to come up, uh, I will, um, if you have any high level comments, Ellen, that's fine. But I know that the board had a chance to review the, the handbook that you sent over. I assume it's a draft. Um, you know, if you want us to open up the questions for the board first, if you want to say anything on that, I'll, I'll turn it to you and get your thoughts.
Questions first.
So we, we had the, just so everybody knows, it's, uh, was it in the, was not in the agenda. So is it possible? It was emailed. Is it possible for us to put that in the agenda today as a draft? Um, we can send it over to you, Ellen, just to have that in there. Are you comfortable with us putting that in there?
Absolutely.
Okay. Um, just as a draft, knowing that the final edition might change, but it's a ways and means handbook, something that we haven't had in the past. Uh, Ellen was able to write this up and is looking for feedback. So questions from the board, I will open it up for that.
First, thank you for putting this together. Long overdue. Certainly appreciate that. And I don't know if this is a question necessarily for you, but it's a ways and means general question. So this might actually be a question for here. Um, but I know that, so I know the public can't see it, but I think you're pretty familiar with it. You created the document. Definition, item number one, appointing members by moderator. I think that's something we discussed that we have to clean up on our end. If I'm, if I'm not mistaken. So we were told at one point that that we haven't given anyone the authority to do that yet.
Yeah, we, we, um, so there was some effort to dig back into the history of ways and means in the Amherst School District. And there wasn't much considering nothing. So, um, I think that here we are moving forward. Right? That's what Mike said. So here we are moving forward. So I think that, um, I'm not sure that's a board. That feels a little you know, maybe we're crossing a line. If the board gets involved with how that's done, I think it, I don't know. Yeah, that's a tricky one. Because I think, I think that, you know, the board and ways and means. The idea of it is, you know,
Need to be separate here.
There's a lot of Yeah, I would, I'm a fan of, of past precedent in this situation. I think the confusion, if I recall, um, when I was trying to learn more about the process, when South Heagan was founded, there was a charter. And so the charter here was very specific and clear with their finance committee and how that worked and how that would be appointed. So I think we were sort of looking for, you know, did something like that exist in, in the Amherst School District? And to my recollection, when I was asking questions and doing some historical research, it, um, at one point, ways and means, this was a town committee and they looked at the schools as well. And then it, and then it split off. So I think the expectation in this town is that the moderator that's elected is elected to run the, run the meeting and, and appoint those members. So I think I think what you've done here by putting together this handbook is critical in kind of passing that role. Here we go. To, to the next person. So here we go. So thank you for doing that. So my first question, I guess for you regarding this handbook. Um, I'm also a big fan of standardization and, and consistency. So
standardization and, and consistency. So in the South Hegan School District, is this what the, I know the moderator there runs a pretty tight ship. So is this similar to the handbook that, that he has, or have you had an opportunity to, um, work together at all?
So I did send it to George. I haven't gotten any feedback. I think he's been pretty busy this summer. Um, I think that he has some guidelines. I'm not sure his sheet of paper would be considered, um, more descriptive than that. Um, so I'm hoping that George can bring this forward as well. So there's consistency in the SAU.
Yeah.
Um, because then I, and I know I'll say publicly, I know there's a search for some additional SAU ways and means members to step up and help with that. So I mean, literally this is a draft. I'm looking for input, um, and I'm sure I will get some from George when he has the time to review it.
Jerry, any questions from you? Sorry, Jason, I didn't see you.
I, I was just looking through it one more time, um, to see if anything jumped out at me. I really appreciate you putting in some very specific things about, um, how to run meetings, write to know, how to keep track of their minutes and things, since we know that, um, it was certainly maybe, uh, uh, not knowing what all of the requirements were last year that, that was an issue. And so trying to help this group be a little more prepared. I really appreciate having, having that really laid out nicely. Um, I got a little bit lost on the chain of communications of questions. A made a lot of sense to me and then B kind of, it seemed like a partial thought. Um.
It could have been.
I, I think there were some scrabblers, uh, scrabblers errors, Terry's, we like to call some of those.
But I mean, overall, I think if those were the nicest, it's easy to understand. It's not overwhelming, but it's something to go back to and to feel like you kind of know where you're starting because as we all know, who've served on ways and means and who've had to learn budgets, it's, it's a lot to learn. And so, um, just feeling like you've, you've got at least okay. What is my purpose? What are, what are some of the things and to feel prepared? And to be able to, um, reference, I, I think this is just a really great way, a strong start. So thank you for, um, getting this down and writing.
You're welcome.
Yeah. And I guess my follow-up to the question about checking in with the South Hegan moderator is, um, if, if the BA's offices, you know, had an opportunity to weigh in on any thoughts, because there's obviously references to work in your office there. So, um, but yeah, I think just a few things to clean up on the, um, you know, it's still in draft form, but.
Yeah, um, Ellen did share this, a draft with me earlier this summer and I had a few comments for her. So yes, we did work together on it.
And obviously it's a live document, so, um, you can just throw some comments in there. Feel free to correct it. Please don't use a. Jason.
Yeah. So my turn again. I just want to point a clarification. I wasn't saying that the, I was, wasn't trying to say that the moderator shouldn't be appointing members. I think the moderator should be appointing the members. I just didn't know if we needed to like somehow formalize that process, because I think that was a discussion that we had at, at one point, whether or not.
Sure.
Be fully actually ever truly with talking about the history empowered the moderator to do that because it was.
Well, I mean, it is a subcommittee of Amherst School Board i- in, in some aspects. So it may be something, I, I would assume that this would be something we have to put on the ballot for the town to vote on, correct? To be able to say that this is the process, how it works, Amherst School Board, um, or the town elects moderator and the school board empowers that moderator to appoint a ways and means committee. I assume that we would want at some point though, as part of this, dictate the number of people that are on that, um, you know, in terms of a three, five, seven member committee, get to more specifics of it. Um, but I think it's something that we can discuss and, and look into doing, um, if there's appetite for that on the ballot to, to clean it up. Um, for us, for March of this year, next year, because again, I think as we've seen, the legislative ambiguity is, uh, very robust for this one.
Yeah. And then, so Tom, you mentioned that the number of people has brought me to my question, number one, process of appointments in seven members. What happens if we can't get seven members? Should we reword that to like up to seven members? No more than seven member?
It's a great question. I haven't had a lot of difficulty.
Okay.
Um, but I think that, um.
The SAU, we have nobody.
I'm trying.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Um, so I, I will say that this is, it's, is this the biggest budget? And so I think the idea of three or five is just not enough. Um, and so when, I think it, the, that was brought up at the last meeting when I introduced the ways and means members and it got me thinking, oh, do I need to get one more? Um, I, some of the feedback from the members was yes, please, because you know, this is just a further burden if there are fewer people. So I, I would stick with the seven. That's just my opinion.
You know, the only problem I see with that Ellen is if you codify seven and you only have five people that sign up, I know you just, you know, what do you do at that point is the,
So you really could just say you need an uneven number.
Yeah. No more than seven, maybe.
Or, yeah. Yeah. I mean, you know, that will ebb and flow. You're right. It, it may not, you may not want to put that in the wording of a Warren article.
Yep.
To say that there will be seven. Um.
Well, I want to encourage seven.
Yeah, I think.
So like, so we have to think about the wording, like encourage seven, but if it's not seven, it doesn't paralyze the.
Correct.
Maybe from working. So I, that's why, I don't know, maybe we just have to workshop that a little bit and think a little bit, you know, more about, about how we word that.
You would think it would not be hard to find seven people in a town this size.
You would think, but don't think, thinking is dangerous.
Any other questions for Ellen? Thank you, Ellen. We will, uh, continue to work on, sorry, go ahead.
So I'll add any feedback. When would you like to see a final or do you care? Is this just a working document to go into the history logs? What are you thinking?
Your handbook. So I think it's for us, it's a matter of just, you know, knowing what the policies are. Um, I think when we say edits, we're not going to say this needs to change, this need to change. I mean, simply because again, trying to keep that separation of powers. Um, maybe more questions that we have in line for that.
Yeah.
But I think, you know, when you're ready to do, obviously I think you'd want it in place by October when we start to go over the budget, but I think, you know, if we had something to review at September meeting, just as an FYI, I think that'd be helpful, but certainly not mandatory.
Okay. And then I think I will contact, is there a moderator in Mount Vernon? Yeah. Okay. And so maybe some consistency would be a good idea. So there's one working document. Um, and that way the number of people could be left out of it too, considering every district, you know, that everyone's a little smaller, different sizes. So, okay. Yeah, that's fine. Um, Amy, can you email me the, the person in Mount Vernon? Great. All good?
Thank you, Ellen.
You're welcome.
All right. So moving on tonight, we have our first look at the budget calendar and then we'll actually, uh, so I'll turn that over to Amy and then we'll actually divide up budget subcommittees and determine which meetings we are all going to attend as board members, uh, to break down further budget pieces.
Yeah. Thank you, Tom. So in your packet, you have the, um, Amherst School District FY25 Budget Calendar. I also shared with all members, the Google Doc that has this calendar as well as a, a master for all districts as well as the SEU, Maugarnen and South Hegan, um, just so you have all that information. So the calendar that you have in your packet has all of the, uh, board meetings, all the ways and means meetings, the subcommittee meetings, all the way through deliberative. So it should be, uh, comprehensive. So tonight, um, I'll take any questions. I have to say it'll be hard to move things around because if you take a look at all of the districts, it's, um, a pretty complicated calendar to put together. Um, but if there's something really pressing that needs to change, um, I can look to do that. So tonight we'll be looking for the board to appoint, uh, members to the subcommittee meetings. Uh, and once ways and means meets and organizes, they will be doing the same. Um, and we've already assigned out the administrators to those meetings as well. Those went out this summer.
Okay.
So we can, um, you can.
So I have the trouble opening for the subcommittees.
Okay, great.
Does anybody have any, um, any questions on the calendar, um, either philosophically or, um, the actual scheduling of these?
And, and I'm sorry, one other thing I'll add, last year we broke out curriculum and administration by school. So I did lump those meetings back to back. So it might make sense for folks who are, um, wanting to, to work on that, to, to schedule their time so that they can, um, not have breaks in their calendar. Um, the meetings, these are subcommittee meetings, so a quorum is not required. The meetings will be, help, will be available both in person as well as Zoom. And I did schedule them during lunchtime hours. So, uh, for folks who, um, are working, hopefully this is uh, a little bit easier for, for making the meeting.
What are we having for lunch in those days?
Well.
We're going to do that, it's going to go all the way.
All right. We'll see. Walton's pizza.
Um, Terry, any questions on the calendar?
Uh, no, I, am I crazy? We, I thought we already chose our, our groups, but I guess we only chose for.
We have not chose budget groups. We just choose, uh, we just chose the subcommittee groups for what you were going to be doing on a town-wide scale. So CIP, selectmen, et cetera. This is specifically, you know, who's going to sit in the school nutrition services, who's going to sit in on transportation when we have those budget breakdown discussions.
Fair. Okay. Thank you. Just checking my memory, which is obviously faulty.
Okay. So with that, uh, school nutrition, I would certainly like to sit on that one if someone else would care to join me. So a quorum is not required for the meeting, but we do have to still follow board rules where we can't have more than two board members at any one of these meetings.
Right.
Do we want to, like, is the?
We typically do two, so we have a fallback and, you know, both can go great, but if only one can make it, we at least have a backup.
I'll do nutrition.
Okay.
Actually, I'm on wellness, so.
Oh, go for it, Terry. Sure.
Shannon, would you mind? Just because I think they are hand in hand. Okay.
Nope.
All you, Terry. Transportation. Which would be fairly light because we are not.
I'll take that one. You said the magic words.
I mean, right, Amy?
Say that again.
Transportation is not up for a contract renewal this year.
It'll be pretty easy.
Okay.
I'll do that one.
I'll do that one with you, Shannon. That's fine. Uh, Clark Wilkins, Curriculum and Administration.
I can do that one.
Sounds like Tim will want to join you on that one too.
We can talk about that.
Oh, oh, okay.
We can, like, you, if you guys switch the dates, we'll, we'll figure out, we'll make sure that they match up and if we have to switch.
I can just change the calendar.
Board members to do that.
That works better for me.
And the invites.
Okay.
Yep.
Uh, AMS Curriculum and Administration. Jason?
I can do that as well.
Terry, all you. Just bear with me as I type these out. Jason, Terry, Technology.
I have traditionally done that one, but if someone wants to take a turn, who hasn't done it, I don't want to hog it.
I'll do it. Well, I'll do it with you, Terry.
Sure.
Facilities. I can do that one. Shannon as well. Student Services. Say, we'll throw Tim on that one.
Yeah, I keep forgetting you.
I also have Tim on the Clark Wilkins ones as well. So. Uh, anybody else for Student Services? I don't know what the dates are for that one.
I can do Student Services.
Thank you, Terry. I'll add you on that. And then the last one, capital items and grants. I don't mind sitting on that one. Be careful that O in the I and Tim and Tom make a difference. Uh, capital items, twelve, three. Student Services, Terry, or, um, actually we'll do Tim on that one as well, because that'll be a, a day where Tim is already there anyway. So. All right. We'll have these, everybody just confirming their schedules. If we need to do some shuffling after, we can just communicate and, uh, let Amy know. Then if Amy switches those dates for Clark Wilkins and AMS, we can adjust as needed on that as well.
Yeah, I'll just switch the invites.
Okay. Anything else, uh, anything else on that? Yeah, these meetings are all at the Brick School.
They're all at the Brick, Brick School and as well as Zoom option.
Yep. Thanks. You have option for.
Say that again.
They're, they're all at the Brick School and, um, they all have a Zoom option as well.
I don't know. Thank you. I appreciate that. The Clark Wilk, the Clark Wilkins and the AMS, those are swapping days or you're saying that?
I am going to do that. Yep. I'll, I'll flip the calendar, um, and change the invites.
Okay. Thank you. Cause I have one of those. Thanks.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions for Amy on this? All right. Moving on to our next item, we will talk about staffing. Uh, we, we have one item to cover on here first and, and we'll make it as part of the overall staffing conversation, but, um, the board, there was a request for the board to make a, a, a motion tonight to declare a local critical shortage area in this district for a digital learning specialist. So before we take that mo, or make that motion and, and vote on it, I will let Steve explain what this exactly means, why we need to do this, and then any other staffing, staffing items, and then we can go back to making and voting on that motion.
Sure. Happy to. So, um, the, one of the things that Christine and I and Mike spent a lot of time on is credentialing of teachers. And there is, uh, ability within the, uh, minimum standards or the regs of New Hampshire Education Department to declare a critical shortage area at the local level. So a few years ago, every single credential was a critical shortage area in Hampshire. And it's a little bit puzzling to me now in the big, biggest teacher shortage that we've seen, that there are some areas now that aren't critical shortage area, but that is what it is. Typically, they used to determine the critical shortage area by a survey to superintendents about a number of open positions and length of open positions, but I haven't received that in a couple of years. So, oh, there you go. So we have a, uh, New Hampshire credentialed math teacher who's wonderful, spent some time with, uh, with him, but now, now that he's relocated from Arizona, we're working on the credential and he has taught, um, technology. This is really a, 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 a process um, that will allow him because, uh, a major assignment, which is more than half of his time, he is teaching technology. So we have to get him a technology cert in Hampshire that's called a digital, uh, learn, learning specialist, sorry. Um, so tonight, if the board would be so gracious to declare a, a local critical shortage in the area of digital learning specialist, then we will create a site-based plan and, and looking at his transcript and looking at his experience and his professional development. I would think very quickly he will obtain, uh, he will develop a plan, it'll be approved by the state and he will obtain his credential. Um, this is a well-qualified teacher who taught, uh, uh, technology in another state and just aligning him with the state standards, but it will not be difficult. So the board tonight, if they would declare a local critical shortage area in the area of digital learning specialist, um, those minutes get sent to the state and then we can create a site-based pool.
Uh, any other staffing items you want to discuss tonight, Steve, or is that the primary one?
Um, happy to dig in, uh, to the MOU if you'd like.
Oh, we'll, we'll do that after, after this. Those are two, yeah, two items. So I'll take a motion to declare a local critical shortage staffing area in this district in the terms of a digital learning specialist, which would allow the district to fill that position accordingly. I'll take a motion to that extent.
I will make that motion to that extent.
Okay. And I'm looking for a second.
A second.
Further discussion, questions for Steve.
I just have a question. So this is at the middle school?
Correct.
Okay. And, um, we, have we, are, have we already hired or we, we need this to, we've already hired?
Yes, he's hired. He's credentialed in Hampshire. This is now based on the assignment where he's at.
Gotcha.
And to be honest, this is the best approach that ensures it, but there are other approaches that we could have declared an, an emergency authorization, things like that. So. Um, this is right within the regs, right within the process. We're doing great.
Yeah. And I just want to make sure that I understood you. He was credentialed to teach this in a different, in another state, but are, he just needs our state credential.
That is correct.
Okay.
A, a question on that, Steve, you may have touched on this and if you did, I apologize, but is, how commonly used is this in the state?
Um, very common.
Okay.
Um, and, and it's actually, uh, I, we did it in another district in the SAU 39 last year.
Okay.
Um, and if, if you've seen the newspapers, there are multiple schools without any candidates, let alone one that can very quickly get a site-based credential. So this candidate will be credentialed very soon where there in New Hampshire, there are many people who are under emergency authorization, which all you need is a bachelor's degree and a background check. So we're in good shape.
And what's the timeline on that? To, what are we expecting?
For to be fully credentialed?
Yeah.
Uh, I would say by the, he has three years, but I would say by the end of the.
Okay.
Uh, but even quicker, but I would think he's also learning new preps and new as, you know, as he's. Yeah, he, oh, he gets, he will be applicable for, he'll get the intern license right away, but he'll be fully credentialed, I would say by. Yeah, he, oh, he gets, he will be applicable for, he'll get the intern license right away, but he'll be fully credentialed, I would say by, he's has a sense of urgency to get this done.
Any other questions, Terry?
Uh, no, thank you.
Okay, so we'll call a vote on that, a roll call vote, starting with Terry.
Beam, yes.
White, yes.
Gascoigne, yes.
And Gothier, yes, so that'll pass forward to nothing. Steve, please go ahead and, uh, declare an emergency critical shortage.
Thank you.
Or we declare it, you can now go.
Yeah.
To fill, to fill the position.
Yeah.
Uh, the other staffing item that Steve wanted to have, I, I skipped over in the agenda, but we, we did get some news tonight, where we have a memo, memorandum of understanding that we're working on with, uh, the ASSA, the support staff, I will let Steve explain it, but we are ready to be able to take a vote on this to approve it tonight, as the, uh, ASSA is doing likewise.
No, I appreciate, this is a, a holdover from discussions we had, oh, in June, I think, so, um, very honored, very privileged to work with Tom and Josh on the ASSA contract last year. Uh, it was a significant contract, and one of the nuances in this work is we went from a forty step. Believe it or not, it would take forty years for someone to reach the top of the salary, and we reduced that down to twenty, which is great for everybody, and we also, under Thompson and Josh's leadership, fundamentally changed our starting wage to be more competitive with retail and other areas. But one of the side, um, um, one of the side impacts or unintended consequences, when we reduced, um, someone like from six years' experience was reduced to three. So that means if we hired someone off the street with five years' experience, they would actually be placed higher than someone who was already employed with a six-year, because we cut the steps in half, you with me? So, um, to be fair, um, to our current employees and honor their experience, we've worked with the association on just three areas of focus. One is to establish this year the ceiling for twenty-three, twenty-four, for the years of experience is three. Um, and there won't be any, uh, paraprofessional less than three years' experience, so no one gets treated unfairly or harmed because of they chose to stay in this district and work with us. You with me? So if someone was, had four years' experience, moved to step two, we're gonna move them to three. And we're gonna hire anybody new at three, so no one gets treated unfairly in that category. That was about ten people. The other area, and, and, um, Tom remarked this at the deliberative, and it's area of Tom focuses, we were trying very hard not to have any employees start less than fifteen dollars an hour. The only area is food service. And it's just slightly under, so, uh, and, um, because of the, the way that the salary schedule was restructured, there's very little increment in the food service from year one to year two. So what we've decided to do to support the food service department is in this year, step one is actually step one. So we hire someone, they're a step one, they're about fourteen eighty-five, just under fourteen seventy-five, just under. But next year, the lowest step we're gonna hire them will be on step two, which will be about fifteen twenty-five. Um, because that, it's such a small increment, the way it worked, is that someone could be hired less than fifteen next year, you with me? So that's another very small change, that in year three, step three will be year one. And then all our employees will be over fifteen dollars an hour at a starting wage in the Amherst support staff, which is much more competitive regionally. It was a goal of this board, trying to make a competitive wage. So that's step two. The third step is, and, and, and Kristin and Kathleen are here, and I'm glad you're both would say, and did at times, they were very concerned about our ability to attract and retain office staff. So much so, I don't wanna tell you how many people got pretty far through, through Kristin. But working with the ASA, we are going to move all our office staff to step five. So all of them, um, will be at that, that top where our contract would have. Um, and that really honors the complexity of the position, but also it increases our ability to attract and retain. So, um, overall, um, this is not necessarily an increased cost for the district, because the, the, before this MOU, we could have hired, for example, there's three pair openings, I think, at Clark Wilkins, I saw. So before, we could have hired those on step five, now we're hiring those on step three. So we're saving money on new hires, and we're honoring people who are existing employees and are office professionals. So it is, I, and Amy and I talked about this today. It may work out to be pretty neutral, it's just a fairness issue. This is a fairness approach, and I appreciate the boards, remember we had this conversation? That's why it's, it's not the first time, it's first time they see it in paper. But this is, uh, I really appreciate this board's, um, desire to ensure we treat every employee with fairness and do what's right, and that's what this is an example for. And I appreciate, um, the AESA, SSA leadership to help it work with us in approaching it this way.
Okay.
Um, so there is an MOU, and, um, the action item would be to, um, to, to, to allow the chair to sign the MOU as just described. To authorize, so if the Amherst School Board would authorize Chair Tom Gothier to sign the MOU as presented, that would be Wunderbar.
Why don't we get a motion to that extent?
I will make a motion to authorize Tom Gothier to sign on behalf of the board the MOU as described.
I'll second.
Thank you, Shannon. Any further discussion or questions for Steve on that?
I appreciate your, um, providing all the explanation tonight, I recall us having this conversation before, so I think equity and fairness, um, is important to the people who are working hard for our, our students.
Kathleen, this has been me.
Uh, all right, we'll call a vote on that, uh, all in favor, Terry, roll call vote, starting with you, please.
Beam, yes.
Gascoigne, yes, oh, I know, sorry, sorry.
Yes.
Gascoigne, yes.
And Gothier, yes, I'll sign this after we're, uh, done tonight, Steve, you can have your pen back for now. All right, moving on, let's talk about some library funds, the Josephine-Hare, uh, Memorial Trust Fund that we have, this is a fund uh, that has been in the district for a long time now, but proceeds from the, uh, capital that was put in there years and years ago is used to fund library programming, furniture upgrades, et cetera, uh, and we have a request to take money out of that for this year, and Christine will walk us through that.
Yeah, thank you. Um, as Tom mentioned, we have the Josephine-Hare Memorial Trust, it is, um, with the town, and in order to extend those funds, we do need authorization from the board. Um, we can send that authorization from our meeting minutes to the trustee of the trust funds, who will then, um, be able to, um, you know, refund any purchases we make, um, as authorized, uh, from the board. So, um, you may recall, for the past two years, we've utilized this trust fund to buy rolling library shelves. You saw them, um, during your August, uh, meeting, and that really allows us, one, to upgrade the, the, to help support the upgrade of the furniture in the library, which we've been working very hard to do, but also allows that space to be utilized, um, in, uh, you know, multiple ways. When we can roll those shelves out of the way, we have a larger space, um, to gather teachers, um, to do programming in that space. So, um, uh, last year, we utilized one of the rolling, um, uh, or the one shelf, uh, rolling bookshelf we purchased over at Clark for our library, that's in the multipurpose room, so we definitely need the, really to roll that, tho- those shelves, um, when we have PE in there. Um, and the year before, it was for the Wilkins Library, so, um, we're requesting an additional, um, rolling bookshelf, uh, and that would be for the Wilkins Library, again, to give more flexible space there. So we currently, um, in interest to have, um, and this was from a few weeks ago, but, um, uh, requesting, um, one thousand five hundred sixty-four dollars and fifty cents, that's our current interest from the trust, to utilize up to that amount to purchase the rolling, uh, uh, bookshelf for the library. So I'd be looking for a, a motion.
If you have funds left over from that fifteen hundred and change, would there be other items that you're looking to purchase?
There will likely not be much left over, I didn't get, um, an updated quote, um, you know, I had last year's as a, um, you know, kinda gauge from that, um, there.
The only reason I ask Christine is, when we do things like this, I, I feel like for the board to get that specific is maybe out of our purview, so I would rather just have us create a motion that says, uh, authorize up to fifteen sixty-four fifty to utilize on library furniture, and just have you dictate how you.
Yeah.
Wanna use that, so.
Yeah.
Uh, and even if it's not even furniture, if it's buying more books for the vending machine or something, it's, you know, something along that, but I think just allocating the funds as opposed to specifically what they're for is better use of your time for.
Yeah.
And better allocation of our, um, authorization powers, too.
Yeah.
Um, anything else?
That's up to the board, yeah, that's it.
Um, so, any thoughts from the board, if somebody wants to make a motion to authorize up to fifteen hundred sixty-four and fifty cents to use on furniture and curriculum upgrades in the library? I'm just trying to write down. One thousand five hundred sixty-four fifty.
Yeah.
I will make a motion, uh, to authorize the expenditure of up to one thousand five hundred sixty-four dollars and fifty cents from the library trust.
I will second.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, Terry, will you start our roll call vote?
Beam, yes.
White, yes.
Gascoigne, yes.
And Gothier, yes. All right, uh, moving on, our last couple of items here are fund balance and end of year projects, another one that Amy will be able to get us up to date on.
Yes, so, um, I unfortunately don't have final end of year fund balance tonight, I was hoping to have that, but, um, we'll certainly have it for the next board meeting, we're really, really close to, um, completing our year-end financial reports for the Department of Education and Department of Revenue. Um, that being said, the good news is the board had authorized to do, uh, some of these projects regardless, so, uh, you might have noticed the office trailer that is out, um, in front of Wilkins School, and, um, the electrical, electrical connection for that is hopefully happening, um, this week, um, or early next week. Uh, the portable leveling has happened, um, and the board, or, and facilities is working on getting the stage all set up for, uh, for music. So those projects are in motion. Um, in terms of end of year financing, e- end of year funds, um, as well as, I think, I believe the board has received some communications on from the Department of Education on the, uh, potential increase in adequacy funding. So we just received, uh, a report on those funds, um, and some communications on the options that the board has and how to treat those funds. So there are two options. Um, the board can, uh, opt to increase appropriations, and if that, if the board does do that, then, um, we would need to hold a special meeting, meaning draft the Warren article, hold a public hearing, hold a deliberative, um, in order to, um, increase appropriations to spend those funds. Most districts are not opting to do that. Most, uh, districts, they are opting for the other option, which is to use those funds to offset, um, the tax effort for the year. So that is, in talking to other BAs around the state, that is primarily what, um, districts are opting to do. So if you, the default is, if you do nothing, that's what happens, you're, uh, the tax effort is reduced, so good news for the taxpayer. Um, in looking at end of year funds, it does look like we will have, uh, funds to, um, to meet what we had said we would have an end of year fund balance to offset the tax rate, and we will also have the funds for the, um, the Warren article for six hundred and five thousand, it's just what we potentially have beyond that.
Okay.
Yep.
And that was roughly one point three and change?
It's about one point three eight, yeah.
Okay. Any questions for Amy on that? When do you expect the final numbers, Amy?
Tomorrow.
Okay, so we'll have them for the next meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
And I assume with that, any additional funds we have, whatever projects that we had allocated above that, you'll, you'll know what we're going to focus on?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Yep, and then, you know, and with that, the board can really decide, um, if you wanna use, if, if we don't have enough funds to do all the projects, you, you may wanna at least think about funding what was done out of reserves and potentially using additional funds for other, other projects, or not, or just using it all, so it really will be up to you. So we'll have more information at the next board meeting, and you'll be able to make those decisions, so.
So tonight, you don't need anything from us, because if we do nothing with the tax effort, or with the adequacy funding, it just goes back to offset taxes.
Correct.
So with that, I will open it up to the board for any questions, or if somebody wants to propose something other than offsetting the tax effort with those adequacy funds.
What day do we have to make that determination? I'm just curious, do you know? You'd have to do it soon, because we'd have to basically plan for another. Sure. Meeting, which is, you know, the full process. I, I'm not proposing that that's the path we need to go down or not, I just wanted to draw the, my fellow board members' attention to the, um, the DOE is having a Zoom session available, um, to board members and, and, and folks interested on August thirtieth at two o'clock, um, in understanding the adequacy formula for FY twenty-four and the new aid, so I think if, if we, you know, if anybody's interested in learning more, that's out there. Yeah, they're doing the same thing for, um, administrators the end of the month. Um, and it, you, you would have to decide so that we would be able to set the tax rate. So that's something that I'm working on right now, um, is setting the tax rate for both Amherst and Mont Vernon for the school portion. So, um, and it's, it's based on what revenue we expect for the year, and adequacy is, is one of those pieces, so.
Okay. Does anybody in the board have the appetite, or the desire, appetite was the leading word, I apologize, is anyone in the board would like to propose increasing appropriations and going through that process?
Do we have the dollar amount? Do you have the dollar amount? So it's a little complicated, because the, um, adequacy is determined based on municipality. So there's the Amherst adequacy and the Mont Vernon adequacy, and then it does get split up by district, however, when it goes to offset the tax, the tax effort, it gets combined again. So, so it's a little confusing, so Amherst, oh, I'm sorry, Sohegan, I'm, yeah, I'm sorry. So, Sohegan, because it's Amherst and Mont Vernon, Sohegan part for Amherst gets put back in, and the Mont Vernon part for Sohegan gets put back in, so, did I say it right?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, it's really complicated. Yeah.
Comes together, so you, as Amy told me, I learned this week, that you guys fully pay Amber's tax.
Yeah, right.
And then it gets split into Sohegan, so that's why it's all covered.
Right, so on your tax bill, it just says, "School", so, um, so for just Amherst District, it was about four hundred and eighty-four thousand, um, and.
Increase or total amount?
What's that?
Increase or total amount?
Increase.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. And then Sohegan, um, I believe from memory, I think it was ninety-eight thousand.
To the intent of this budget, right, this is because the biennial budget that the state did was tax-free. Um, and they really haven't, in the past, encouraged districts who are just very, very strapped to have the hearing and you, and like, um, this happened recently, like, two. Yeah, so, um, highly recommend that you, you know, that make the tax relief, right, we didn't pass a budget, good faith, that, and, and, and one of your, um, statements is that if we're had a choice, and you, you chose to support tax relief, and you're listening to the best you can for the taxes, as Amy said, that's what the vast majority of districts are doing. Um, and we did it last time, the last time we had this, we didn't spend it, we turned it back to the taxpayer, because that's what the state funds, right, if, there's no, you have to have everybody reauthorize the use of this, and they haven't yet, so.
Well, I also find it, it, it's, it's difficult to authorize doing a special, in my minds, to do a special meeting, because we're gonna have to pay for that, too, so we're just gonna take money out of the, um, out of another budget item, just to be able to spend this money on educational items. I mean, it just, it's a, it's an additional cost on top of the actual four hundred and eighty thousand that we would have additional to spend, so.
And it would have to go for a vote, too, so you'd be asking the.
Correct, yeah, 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 those ones say we'd have to host that election and do all that, so, um. Okay, any other comments on that? Uh, anybody, again, anybody wanna propose doing the alternative, or do we just wanna leave it where we do nothing and go, uh, use it to offset taxes?
I wanna use it to offset taxes, but would it be better for us statement-wise to make that like a formal vote, just for PR purposes, cause?
Yeah, we can do that, I, I think it's a smart thing to do, to codify it.
I'll make a motion to, uh, use our adequacy funds, increasing adequacy funds to offset the taxpayer burden.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
All right, uh, any further discussion? Terry, please start the roll call vote.
Beam, yes.
White, yes.
Gascoigne, yes.
And Gothier, yes, so that passes forward to nothing, and we will use the additional adequacy funds to offset taxes. Uh, my commentary is, I think that's a very wise decision, good motion, Jason.
Thank you, and it might make sense to highlight that during the budget process.
Yep, got it. Good point, Amy.
Right.
All right, going back to the agenda, I believe we've touched on every item but one tonight, we had skipped over a couple, so I just wanna make sure that we went back and got them. Talked about communications as part of our goals, staffing is done, fund expenditures. Uh, before, actually, we have two items, I, I know, so we have one item, uh, it, uh, the last one here involves the use of school computers, and it's the internet content management update. Uh, and Mike, is that still gonna be you? Uh, board was given a, uh, a, a notice on this from Steve Chamberlain, explaining the policy and the procedures, and, and I will let Mike explain it more.
Yeah, I'm gonna kinda introduce part of it, i- in the sense that, uh, there's probably a larger conversation to be had, you know, um, around this topic a little bit, but we wanna kinda get the, the school year. Around this topic a little bit, but we want to kind of get the the school year going and. You know, get some some guidance to the students and the teachers and the admin at at Amherst Middle School. So because it's one of those events that's kind of been carried over in conversation, that's been been happening for for a few months now. Steve produced the memo, I'm going to have him kind of walk through a little bit of the memo and how it applies to, you know, how we're going to start the school year. Yeah, but there will be further conversation on this as we as we move forward.
So thanks, this is a a little bit of a holdover from last year, my interim superintendency, so last year we're we're working with John and Kristen. And there were a number of times where parent complaint, student complaint, faculty complaint, it came to their desk. About access to inappropriate material through internet and sometimes like it it. And we did, it was brought to senior leadership, it was brought to leadership and we all asked, like, in in some districts, the district I came from and everyone around the table. There was the ability to see what the students were on their laptops during the day. And we were kind of surprised, and then so we went and we talked to some best practice call, I communicated with the director of technology. Organization, everybody called other districts. And and found that this was a, we were a little bit of an outlier, that there wasn't the ability to go on and see what kids were doing during the day. And so that was the discussion and tried to do some background and wanted it in place prior to the start of the school year. And so this is a response to community, parent guardian, teacher and administration and trying to provide a little bit. More restriction and a little bit more insight to what students are doing, so the key, the statute. Really relies on the definition of surveillance. And and that's what, when I talked to the to the president of the Director of Technology, Cosen, they talked about. So what we're talking about is really the same thing as if we had twenty kids in front of us walking around just seeing what's on their laptop. Their surveillance piece and Christine and I talked about, we were both into this when the law changed and and there was a time where school laptops go home and there was the ability. For someone to turn on the camera at someone's home. That's what the legislation is determining of surveillance, that someone's at home, we cannot turn on their camera, we cannot turn on their recording. We are not going to take screenshots of what they're on at home, okay, so that's why a public hearing isn't needed because we are not. We're not implementing what the statute calls surveillance. And if you look at our policy, one of the lines in the policies, there is no expectation of privacy in a school, so I believe this notion of. Sampling and I talked to to Brian and the technology crew, they would sample, so in a in the library or in a in a computer class, what are kids on? We'd also have the ability, if we get a report, they're saying, oh, my son, my son loves what I do, but so Kristen gets a call and says, hey. Chase Chamberlain is on these funky websites during the day, while Kristen go on during the day and actually see what Chase is doing. We don't, we didn't have that ability because the classroom management module was not turned on, I think because of a different, to be honest, a different interpretation of the word surveillance. And the survey, the the interpretation that we have now is accepted in the vast majority of schools in Hampshire, including the the Director of Technology organization. So and and I apologize for not preparing the board more if there are other areas to go, what we're asking for tonight. Is is just during, right now, for for tonight is during the school day from eight to to three thirty, have this ability. And one of the, one of Mike's highest priorities is capturing instructional time, so. When we're up and running in this, like, I I love going into class of in math classrooms, there's three or four websites that the teachers use frequently. So we can make it so that the students, while they're in the math class for that and that hundred and fifteen minutes can only access those four websites. They will only, on their computers will be on that, and that's a really good thing, so that captures instructional time. Because they will be supporting the instructional objectives of the class, using this as an educational enhancement versus a recreational activity. So that's what we're asking for, and that's going to take a little bit of time. I went online and watched a little bit of webinar on how to link Google Classroom to the student and have the teacher put the. Desired websites, it's going to take a little bit of time. But that's the today thing, if if the board wants to have, to charge Mike and and us to look to further into other restrictions because. And as Tom is is very right, this is a school purchase laptop. Right, this is, that's what these are, it's a device, so if you want to go further than that, I haven't looked, in my former district. We stopped at the at the schoolhouse gate. And but if if there's a desire to look into that, and I apologize, I didn't do much inquiry about our ability to increase anything beyond the schoolhouse.
Thanks, so we'll open it up for questions from the board, Stephen, summary, this is just going to allow us to have a monitoring service in place during the school hours.
Yes.
This is not strictly a teacher watching around and seeing a student, we're going to have some, there's some tech technology involved. The technology staff will be sampling student use throughout the day, so it's going to be on the backend, looking at whatever websites were down or visited. But not specifically, is it per device, they'll be able to track it to a specific device, correct?
Yes, so.
So again, how is this not surveillance then?
So because we are, the surveillance is is using their their camera, we are monitoring. We are monitoring, we're basically doing the same thing if the technology person got up in class and walked.
So it's strictly related to camera and microphone surveillance, even though we're going to be taking. Essentially, we're doing screenshots, if we know that they went to ESPN, whether he was screenshot or whether we know the website name, it's one and the same, isn't it?
I don't believe so, I believe that's their 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 history, we're going to their site, we're not actually going to see.
We're just going to their history.
Computer and forcibly take a picture from their computer. We are going to see a a log of the sites that they visited.
It's it's still, to me, it's semantical because I I, I mean, not every website is explicit as ESPN where you know what they're looking at, but there are websites where I'm. Going to guess, I can, I I can guess what kind of content they're looking at if I look at a website title.
And that's perfectly fine, the only difference then, before we enact this, we would have a public hearing. So it doesn't mean we can't do it, it means we have to have a public hearing before we do it, and I would say at the public hearing, that would be the limit, we. We have no desire to surveil their house, right, turn on their camera or their recording, but if you believe that looking at their user log. Is the same as capturing a screenshot, then we're going to hold.
Public hearing.
And so we're going to hold on this tonight and have a public hearing, which is, that's what we talked about, I mean, to be honest, we talked.
I just, I didn't absorb that in our, we had a conversation before the meeting started, you and I, I didn't absorb that piece of it there, so it's, it's more semantical to me, but. I'm happy to go with what the board thinks on this.
I have to hold a public hearing because the public, the the parents that I dealt with last year and the parents, this is something that this community, for the parents, want this. But I'm happy to do a public hearing.
Well, I I think we need to talk more, so I have questions, so. I think parents have an expectation that, you know, for some families, they don't even, they they really would prefer their children aren't spending. Anytime on a computer, especially in the early grades, so I think the expectation is that if that's a. A requirement at school that we're keeping our kids safe online, so I think filtering what. The students are able to access is something that parents expect. I'm 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 still kind of thinking through here because I don't know, I think then when we start. Talking about and using words like randomly sampling and, you know, mon, it it changes the tone a little bit, I think that we. Most parents fully expect and want the the filtering happening. I guess my my questions are are in the similar vein, you know, to, number one, I I want to know what the product is and. You're saying we won't turn it on, but the capacity within the module exists to turn the cameras on when they're at home, okay, so it doesn't exist, okay, so that.
Does not exist.
Great, awesome, no, 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 I'm just like trying to ask the questions, and so. So then with this random sampling, how is that different to say to today, a student has an SAU email account, right, there's no expectation of privacy, so. You know, if there's a situation, you you go into the email and you and you can see that, so how is this any kind of different, so this is really just. Like, I guess what's the purpose of the random sampling?
So.
And not sampling when we think there's a problem, then we're.
So it's working with kids saying, look, we want you on the red sites, they want you on the right, appropriate use, follow our typical use agreement. But at times, it'd be like, walk, it's like when I was a building administrator and and it was years ago, there was smoke in the bathrooms.
Yeah.
Randomly, we'd walk in the bathroom, that's what it is, it's instead of having our staff just walk in 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 library, I'm in library quite a bit, do I actually look at their laptops? Not as much, but it's the same thing as visually seeing and then we're just doing it remotely.
So do we not feel confident in our filtering software? Because in my mind, if we're filtering appropriately, it's not an issue.
So.
But.
Kids, we know.
They're smart, right?
We know that there, even though we block them, there are VPNs, VPNs are pipelines out to the internet that we could see if we went on them, but we couldn't stop the filtering. So if Chase Chamberlain is a master at VPN and in Kristen gets a call and says, look. You know, I'm making my daughter uncomfortable, Chase is on this stuff. Then we can go in and we can see it because it, there are ways and the kids, even middle school, the kids are effectively, and that's not just us thing, that's a thing. So we do what is required, SIPA, that requires a filtering, right, we have to have that, and that's where we've stopped, there's other modules. One of the modules is classroom management, allows us to strict certain sites at certain times during the day, that's the classroom stuff, and allows us to see what's on their school. During the school day. But if that's not, and I'm, this was about responding to and supporting, and when kids are. Found violating, but then we can educate them, we can say why, and we can work on that, but it really was. About the sample is when when Kristen meets and she like she did, does her town halls. That's saying, look, we want you to to use this appropriately. And one of the things, and so this device is necessary to enhance instruction. We know that, right, we went, we this year in fifth grade, we bought eighty new ones, have two to one in fifth grade. And by the way, having two to one helps because when you have someone else, you're less apt to go to another site because you have a peer to do that, so that's the good.
You're blaming on the other kid.
Or you're blaming on the other kid. But we don't want to get to, so in the old days, you know, if you had graffiti, you didn't take away the pencil. Right, we want to educate and provide a greater restriction, but we don't want to take away this device, so when a student violates through this, we can only. Have them access certain certain sites during the day, but they can still get the educational benefit. You know what I'm saying, as opposed to saying, no, look, you can't have a laptop, as opposed now you have a laptop, you can only use it, and we can check during the day. Little Chase Chamberlain three times in the day, oh, yeah, and we can reinforce the good behavior, so that's the difference. Eight to three, we provide more restrictions and we provide the ability to supervise kids online, increase supervision of kids when they're using it. But if it's not, we fully understand that the values of this community are represented by you, so we serve at the pleasure. But this was an area of interest for John, Kristen and the leadership team was pretty much unanimous about making, because most districts are here.
So I I I think. In the interest of having a solution as we walk out tonight, because school starts two weeks from today, so kids will be getting computers two weeks from today. I I think the focus is on getting something in place, so I think this classroom management module is is probably a good starting point. But I think we need to find out what our filtering capabilities are, and Terry, I see your hand, I'll come to you right after this. I think, to me, this is no different than having a work device where I can't get on certain innocent websites at work. The, you know, any gambling websites or anything like that, I can't go on my work computer. So to me, on a school device, a school has the prerogative to filter that, but not only when they're in the building, to filter that when they're outside of the building. And to me, if you have strong filtering and we need to find out what those capabilities are, if we can limit it to. Anything that has the word education in the website is a is an example, they can access it, if it doesn't have that, they can't access it. If we can have strong filtering in place, I don't think you need the content monitoring, and so I think we need to find out if that's a better alternative. Because there's no lack of privacy, we're not invading their privacy, we're just saying, you can't go there, so and if you can't go there, again. Kids are smart enough, they may figure it out, but at least we're we're putting that in place where that filter is is there, so.
Happy to take that as homework and dig in more.
Terry?
Yeah, I. I'm glad you brought up the work, like, I'm on a work computer right now, right, it's. It's what I spend, you know, a majority of my time on, and I know I can't use a thumb drive because it's a security thing in my company that we do government work. And we can't have thumb drives because you could introduce things that way. It would be really handy to be able to have one sometimes, but that's just something I know I can't do. I think so long as we make it very clear to families and to kids and everybody's very aware of the policy shift. I'm okay with it, because I think that you could filter as well as you want, but there's still some things that make it through the cracks, right? And I think that you brought up a really good point, Steve, and I'm I'm, I thank you for taking the time to really explain the differences here. I think that being able to physically see a student, see their keystroke, see that, turn on cameras, that's very, very different. Than being able to see basically. A a search log, right, you know, just a, just an internet log, and so I don't, if you have no expectation of privacy. Which we've said upfront that you you don't, if you're on. The company slash school, you know, device. Why would this be any different, it's just, it's just a different snapshot of that device with no expectation of privacy. So. If it's. I mean, I don't. It took me a few readings and definitely hearing the conversation to make sure that I was clear. But I don't feel like this is infringing on anything, and I do feel like we just need to be very. Clear with what's happening so people understand. But I don't, I don't see this as problematic, if it's if it's simply saying, hey, at any given time. You know, are there some things that don't get caught by filtering that we might not be okay, and then we can go have that conversation and say, okay, this is not. This is not okay, it didn't get caught by filter, but it's taking it someplace that's not okay, like, it just gives us a way to have that conversation.
Can I ask another question, I'm curious, and and we talked earlier about continuity amongst the districts, or does anything like this exist in? Mount Vernon or Sohegan? I don't know if it's applicable, I don't know what the laptop profile is in Mount Vernon.
No, I'm sorry, your microphone.
There was not interest at the high school of pursuing this additional module.
I'm just going to add that all of SU thirty nine is far behind. Most other places in New Hampshire, in New England, and in the country in this regard, we have to get something in place to make sure that students are. Kept safe during at least the school day of accessing certain sites, and we have the ability to address some of the behavior when they're not. You know, doing what they're supposed to be doing. And there's ways to do that, and we, as an S S A U and 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 administrative team at the building level and at the district level. Need to come up with a some ideas and thoughts around this that people can get behind, because at the end of the day. I don't really care how we get there, we need to get there, because we're not doing our students. Justice by allowing them to have the type of access without the monitoring during the school day, that is distracting them from learning. That is distracting them from, you know, maximizing the instructional time, it's not giving the the teachers the teeth to kind of. You know, help guide, you know, students, and so that's, I think that's where we're at, but, you know. Because of some things, you know, that happened over the the last couple of years, I think people have a weird. You you know, unique look on content management, filtering, software. And I think it needs to be revisited, you know, bigger picture wise here, but at the beginning of, for the beginning of the year, we we do need to be able to. You know, during the day, monitor what middle school students are doing, that will allow Kristen and her team of people to. You know, make sure that we have the educational environment we want for the kids, but there is definitely a need for a bigger conversation around this, you know.
Yeah, and I think it's whatever our capabilities are, whatever the capabilities that exist that. Are going to provide the least amount of intrusion, uh because again, there's no right to privacy on a public, on a school issued or work issued device. So I'm just going to lock it down, and if you don't like my rules, then you don't play with that device that I give you, so. It's no different than a teenager taking dad's car out, if you get a speeding ticket, you're not taking the car out again, so it's, to me, it's the same. But dad's not following us around, watching us drive everywhere. I will be for my daughters if they're listening, just so that they know. So with that, why don't we have a motion to, or is there a motion to accept the. Implementation of the classroom management module, knowing that we'll have for, as stated as outlined by Steve tonight?
I will make a motion to accept the classroom management module as outlined by Assistant Superintendent Steven Chamberlain.
Can I have a second?
I will second.
What's your thought, Shannon?
The outline doesn't include the eight to three, I I'm I'm reading through it real quick, and I just think that's an important caveat for parents.
That is the intent.
So I I don't know if we need to amend the motion.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead, you can amend it, yeah.
So I would like to.
I just say during school hours.
Amend the motion, yeah, amend the motion. Yeah, three twenty four, I would like to amend the motion just to include that the classroom module will be. I I'm sorry, I've lost the motion, enacted during school hours only.
Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Good, any further discussion? Terry, start the roll call vote, please.
Uh, beam yes.
White yes.
Gas coin yes.
And gothier yes, and then we'll put the asterisk. And gothier yes. And then we'll put the asterisk on this after Steve, if we can continue to investigate what filtering capabilities we have. And then maybe using a combination of the two, if filtering is not strong enough to. Limit this. I know high school didn't have the, but I know what fourteen, fifty year old boys are like, so.
You got, and you noticed there's a little bit of valuation of this on this little memo, you know? That was good.
All right, so that takes us to the end of our regularly scheduled agenda. Before we go to public comment, I will just make a a notice that. An email came out from our nutrition director, Crystal Gendrow today. And it's basically just going through the the highlights, the the rules and regulations for Clark Wilkins and AMS and lunch programs this year. But also highlighting the free and reduced, reduced price meal applications. I know that there is significant funding and different, I don't want to say privileges, but different benefits, whatever the word might be that goes to. Goes to schools with higher percentages of that. So encouraging folks, if you're not sure if you would qualify, go ahead and apply. And if you're, there's certainly no shame in applying. They do have the menu option or the application in English and Spanish in this email tonight. If you did not get the email and you're a parent listening for the first time, certainly contact the school districts or the the buildings where your students are going. And the administrators and the nutrition director will be able to get this out to you so that you have all the information that's on this menu. There is also that school bucks account. Myschoolbucks.com to be able to fund your child lunches because it is a cashless environment. So make sure that. Okay, can they pay? No, they can't pay cash during the lunch line, but they can send cash to schools to add to their school bucks accounts, correct? Okay. So anyway, just look at that. And again, if you if you think you might qualify for the free and reduced lunch, please apply and, you know, it'll, it helps the district. But it certainly will help your family potentially as well. So just want to make sure that people saw that tonight as it goes out. And it is confidential. Yep. So there is certainly no shame in in applying for that, even in a town like Amherst, so. With that, I will open us up for our second public comment of the night. Anybody in person like to make any comments? You'll have three minutes. Come in the microphone, say your name and your town. And then we apparently shut the lights off back there. Sorry, Ellen.
Can it be a public question? Does it have to just be comment? I just have, I have a couple of questions, which could be emailed in response.
You want to run through them and if we need to craft a separate answer, we can, we can just email you those. If you want to email it to us after, we can just.
Perfect. Okay, so big focus on literacy, right? Like, all of my podcasts are focused on reading, 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 reading. So much science going down. I know that when I was on the school board, we. Had a presentation by Wilkins staff and Kathleen that we were using the Lucy Cockens literacy program. Are we still?
Sounds like one we need to have a further follow up on.
Ellen, what I want to say is you can ask your questions and then if you put them in writing, we'll formally respond.
Okay, got it. Perfect. Okay. So my only, my only comment would be the software or whatever you guys were just discussing. I don't know if there's a tremendous cost to that. I think there will be a tremendous cost to teachers if they have a certain expectation. That they have to spend a certain amount of time monitoring this. So. I mean, you can provide the tool. If nobody's using it, it's not really worth it. But on the flip side, with our overtax teachers already. I'd be concerned that we had an expectation that this was going to spend, you know, they were going to be spending a half an hour of their day or something. So that's just a comment. I don't need an answer.
If you want to send us that question, Ellen, we can forward it along.
Not not a question.
No, the first question.
Oh, yes.
On the reading. Yep. That was my intent of what I was trying to say, but you put it much better than I did, so. Any other comments in the room? I see no other comments online. So with that, I will. Close public comments. Steve, I don't think we have a need for a non-public tonight. I'm sorry, Steve, Mike, I don't think we have a need for a non-public, anything on your agenda. Perfect. So with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I have a second.
And I will take a roll call vote, starting with Terry.
Beam yes.
White yes.
Gas going yes.
Gothier yes. We are adjourned at seven twenty-five. Thank you, everybody, and best of luck to the administrators, teachers, principals and students in two weeks.